States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ever-deep in justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Clerk?
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson, City Attorney Stevenson, City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
City Treasurer, I mean, sorry. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed. Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Whealies.
Here.
That out of town, Mr. Chair.
And I also hear from Councilman Murray why he wouldn't be here, so we got a call in present. We're going to start a B and opening. The Persian Department, Canada Johnson, the material supply contract, we have them here in front of us. Can I get a motion in a second to accept those bids?
So moved.
Second. All of a by, opposed? Alright. I'm going down to the minutes. Was there any additional corrections to the minutes, December 16th?
Motion approved and submitted.
Second.
Councilman Cat and Councilman Crum motion second. All of a by, opposed? Alright. Oh, business. A second reading. I guess I'll have to be the attorney for a second. Second reading of an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for economic development services approving a contract between the city of West Memphis and the city and the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce and for other purposes. That's read for a second time. I'm going to ask you all, can I get a motion in second to suspend the rules and place it on this third reading?
So moved.
Second.
All of a by, opposed? This is the third reading of an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for economic development services approving a contract between the city of West Memphis and the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce and for other purposes. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. And basically what this is, is this something we do every year and about all of this, they want to make sure that we do a contract every year. Alright. Any other discussion? All of a by, opposed? It's approved. Mr. Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Two five nine five, twenty-five ninety-five.
Two five nine five. Now, the second reading of an ordinance to waive competitive bidding on professional accounting services and for other purposes. It's read for a second time. You all just want to place it on two weeks, the third reading? Or you want to read that one as well?
Make a motion, we read it?
Second.
All of a by, opposed? This is the third reading of an ordinance to waive competitive bidding on professional accounting services and for other purposes. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All of a by, opposed? Alright. Can I get a ordinance number for that one?
Two five nine six, twenty-five ninety-six.
Two five nine six. We're going to move down to new business. We have a resolution pledging the city of West Memphis in partnership with the Arkansas Strategic Highway Safety Plan to implement a safe system approach to address the safety needs of all users of our estate and local transportation system and for other purposes. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
Wait a minute. We didn't have a motion to suspend the rules. You got to read the whole thing.
Can I get a motion in second? Ms. Mohammed, can you give me a motion to us?
I would actually read R one, R two, and R three by title only.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All of a by, opposed? Alright. Now, a resolution pledging the city of West Memphis in partnership with the Arkansas Strategic Highway Safety Plan to implement a safe system approach to address the safety needs of all users of our estate and local transportation system and for other purposes. I get a motion in second to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Cat and Ms. Mohammed, Councilwoman Mohammed, in discussion?
Mayor, I apologize. I came in a little late today because I was a little bit confused about if we were going to have a pre-council lot, but I don't want to burden people with going over this a second time, but I would like to know a little bit about it.
Sure, sure. Ms. Hicks, will you talk for her, please?
Counselor Hutchinson may have already...
This is a program that the feds put out. I did a quick read on it this morning and of course she'll go over it, but it's like anything else, federal regulations are handed down to the state and state hands it down to us, so.
Yeah, this thing's kind of tall. Basically, we're just doing a best management practices. I mean, safety, as an engineer, when you design a transportation system, you're not just designing it for, you know, the luxury of having a smooth road. There's other factors you have to take into consideration. The type of paint that you apply to the road, the reflectivity of it. You have to take into consideration different types of drivers, different vehicles that go across the road. But at the same time, it all needs to encompass safety, equity for the community, and honestly, America, what we were trying to do is road to zero approach, which means a road to zero deaths. Memphis area is number three in the United States for traffic fatalities, and a lot of it comes from pedestrians. And so basically, we're standing beside RDOT in any type of design that we approve or that we implement within our city, we'll take that safety into consideration to the highest level before anything else. I mean, if you like to read the manual, it is kind of huge.
Well, I was going to ask Counselor Cat.
Right.
Where he resourced that manual, so.
Off RDOT's website.
RDOT, yeah.
Yeah, you can just, you can Google the Arkansas Highway Safety Strategic Plan. They're currently updating it, but they're trying to get a lot of support behind it because it does involve a lot of pedestrian and bicyclist, you know, practices of how you design your road. From now on, it is supposed to be encompassed in all of that. So, we're not just designing for vehicles and trucks. We're designing for people that are on bicycles, scooters, walking, anything. So, that's kind of the gist of it.
I'll just borrow Counselor Cat's, since he's already got it printed out.
Yeah, the original was back in April 2006.
Yes.
It's when the feds passed legislation, of course, gave the states time to get it into their system. Now they've gone through and done a second phase to it.
Right.
So, and states just following up on federal guidelines.
Okay.
Right. That's great.
Just hang tight because I'm fixing to ask you about R two that I think Ms. Hutchinson was talking about when I walked in, so.
Oh, are there any more discussion on R one? Hearing none, all of a by, opposed? It's approved. Mr. Clerk, when you get R one, the resolution is numbered?
Two two six four, twenty-two sixty-four.
It's two two six four. R two, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of West Memphis to utilize estate aid monies for West Memphis East Polk improvements. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Ms. Harris, okay. Alright, in discussions, I do want to, before we begin discussion, I really think you're going to really appreciate this project because with the new schools going there and closing ditches and sidewalks, I think it's going to be a win-win, but since, you give us a little more detail on that?
Yeah, I actually applied for this project over a year ago when I saw the plans for Wonder Junior High. I went to the area, saw that there was absolutely no area for pedestrians, period. Junior high kids love their independence, and so they are going to walk before they let anybody take them to school, especially if it feels good. That area has open ditches on both sides of the road. The road's fairly wide enough for two full-size vehicles to pass each other, much less to have pedestrians on it. After reviewing the site, and I actually went out there, first of all, to look at the drainage. The drainage from the school would, is currently flowing into the two open ditches on East Polk. After some discussion with the design site engineer, we actually had it changed to where it will drain, but he took into consideration that it would be an enclosed ditch. So, over a year ago, I've approached RDOT about this, kept on them, kept on them. COVID happened, they left, they came back. Finally, December 10th, they approved it in the highway commission for as a, for a project. They really like this project because we are actually helping the kids get off the road and making it safer for the area. My goal in the next, might take up to 10 years, but even though this is just from South 25th, maybe hopefully up to South 21st, I plan to keep going with Polk, because Polk is one of the main streets that goes straight down to the school. So, we'll be seeing a lot more of that in the future.
One good thing too, I guess, start with this project, we're going to start from 25th Street all the way down to 21st?
Hopefully 21st. That's depending on the funding.
On the funding, of course, and I think sidewalk start at 18th, if on 18th, so really we get down 18th, we'll be...
Yeah, and it still may take a while to completely redo all that. Now, RDOT projected this project to cost $500,000. Two years ago, the East Barton project was basically the same, was close to a million. RDOT has given us $400,000 towards construction. So, yes, it's a high-dollar project, but for us to do it ourselves, it'd be a lot more money. So, we are projected probably going to spend 450-plus on it, but that is extremely low compared to us just trying to do it ourselves. Hopefully in the future, I can get more funding towards it. It also covers all the engineering costs and the construction inspection costs too, so.
Do you have, do we have plans in doing any other schools that are in our district, our streets in our district that join with schools?
Um, yes. Currently, we got TAP funding, though. We applied for TAP, which is Transportation Alternative Planning, and we are redoing the sidewalks on South 25th on both sides. We didn't include Polk on that. We did include SL Henry, though, across the street from the elementary. So, they're going to do the sidewalks there. We're actually going to install sidewalks, which have never been on Gibson before, Reading and Rhodes around Bragg. So, that was through TAP funding, and I think we got $500,000 for that.
Okay, well, that's good, because those kids coming out of West Junior High in Bragg, they walk right down the street.
Yeah, and people park on both sides of Gibson. I've seen that before. Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about. So, our office is putting together a sidewalk rehabilitation plan, and this plan could last a long time depending on how much funding we allocate towards it, or how much funding we get granted through grants or whatever. We're out there looking. Currently, Sam and I are underneath a fellowship with the University of Arkansas. It's called the University of Arkansas Walking College. And we'll, it's a six-month program where we meet with mentors throughout the state. One of them is the, he's the pedestrian bicyclist specialist for the city of Little Rock. But they're putting a lot of things out there so we can grow and know more about grants. How do these larger cities, you know, have all these neat things, so?
I just got one more question. Maybe, maybe it's related to what we're talking about, and that's with the Bragg, I mean, the Reading Street Bridge is out.
Correct.
Been out, and I was over there looking at the area a couple of days ago, and those children that are crossing that bough, there's a pathway now for them to cross in that bough.
Okay, yeah.
So, you need to really do something to assess those schoolchildren to get across that bough.
Right. I'll get with Mr. Bonner and see if he can. There used to be a large gate across it.
Well, there's a couple of, there's a couple of roadblocks set up, but they're still accessible. I mean, they're still walking across there.
Well...
I got a picture I took, and I'll send it to you. You can see what I'm talking about.
Alright, that's not a problem. We can get with Public Works and see if they can't help us out a little bit on that. As we've been trying to go through the project, the 10-mile bayou project, we're at 90% plans approved. That's only for Phase One from the fire station at Rich and Barton all the way down to Avalon. And currently, like I said, we're at 90% plans. We're waiting to hear back from them, RDOT basically, and so we can go ahead and implement that project. After that, we have put, I think, 1.5 million in CMAC funding towards the rest of the trail, going all the way to OK Street, I believe, is where it papers off. And then, walking from there, you would go down towards the 10-mile, not the 10-mile, the Big River Trail. So, what we're doing is trying to connect all walking areas in West Memphis, okay? It's been discussed about putting in a pedestrian bicycle bridge right there at Reading. Before we even put that in concrete, just throwing it out there in the air, we will probably have to have public discussion, you know, see if the community would want that. One less access point to neighborhood makes neighborhood safer. But the biggest complaint I got is about the kids not being able to walk right there in access point. So, just providing that, and then plus the safety factor of it, making the neighborhood a little bit safer, maybe we could go towards that, because there are a lot of crossings on the 10-mile bayou, a lot.
I'll yield to Mr. Cat over there.
Just, I know that they said they were putting 400, but wasn't there another 140?
Sixty.
No, 140,000 is towards preliminary design engineering and construction inspection. If you take East Barton's number of almost a million dollars in construction, usually engineering is about 10% of the total cost of construction, so about $100,000 for design. Inspection engineering, it varies depending on what all is required to be inspected. So, if they need to break concrete cylinders, or if they need to do a geotechnical sample, that's what that involves. So, those costs are a little, depending on what exactly needs to be done.
Alright, hearing any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Want any other discussion? We're hearing none, all of a by, opposed? Hey, passing, Mr. Clerk, would you get R two a number, please?
Two two six five, twenty-two sixty-five.
Two two six five. Going down to R three, a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting nuisance within the city of West Memphis corporate limits. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I just want to give you all a little insight and the people inside of what's our plans and what we looking at trying to do. If you see behind us for years, and I know many of you have as well, we have rolled past 25th Street, SL Henry and Walker, and we have seen this area continue to deteriorate. Most is more homes dilapidated in that area than people lives in that area. I have been working with contractors begging, trying to get new houses, and I finally got one to buy. The Durbin team is getting ready to start to build houses the first of February. Surely, you know, a couple of months ago, you all voted to release the liens on these properties. Once again, I thank you all for that. But what the city is doing now, my direction that I wanted to go in, I got with my Public Works Department, we went down and identified homes, all of the homes that were empty and dilapidated, about to fall apart, trees on them, the whole nine yards. So, we came up with a plan. I got with Paul to make sure that we do our due diligence in the city process that we must do first before we can turn them down. We identified all of the homes, and I brought it to you all. I want to also ask you all for a motion in second to make these corrections. But what we did, we identified those homes. Then I reached out to Sheriff Mike Allen to see if he have any trustees that he'd be willing to give, and he said he's going to look into this process to help us in a cleaning process. So, once we turn down these structures, if you, if you all approve that, we're going to move forward with them on these structures. Once we do that, then he would go in and take his team in to help us, whatever be under our supervision, clean these properties up real good, as well as then we're going to take out newly formed grass cut team, and we're going to go there and cut these property grass and pick chemicals in it and hope that they won't grow, as well as we're tired to look at what areas they got trees that's growing through to the line that we can be able to turn down. Because some of those properties we own, we know we got Jackson Wonder, that was built, what, two years ago, a year ago? They are up. You got a new Wonder Junior High that's coming up, and that area is going to be in beautified over there. And how this, and the city has already purchased many of these lots already. So, it wasn't nothing about, I want to say roughly seven to eight people that actually live over there in that area right now, and you have at least 20, easily 20 other traders over there that are empty and dilapidated. So, I think this would be a good area. This is some of the things that we were looking at, trying to get a subdivision. We sort of got them buying in on this. This design is, Nick came up with to help us out with some of the different areas, but we hoping to, when we can get these houses torn down. Also, I made with a team at the housing authority to help with any individuals that may be living in it that want to live in the better facilities, to possibly move up on the Section Eight list, give them an opportunity, so they are not just being forced out and we're throwing anyone out. We know there's people that may be financially strapped at this time and need the help, so we'll be assisting for those that are living there. But definitely, we want to continue to buy as many of these properties we can, get them cleaned up. I hoping to build a whole new subdivision house and revitalize the east end of Broadway, which is very important to me and I'm sure members on this council.
Are these houses to be bought, or are they going to be rental-like project houses?
Well, no, these houses right now, developers are bidding them to say.
Selling them.
Sell them, but they're going to be around the 169 number, hopefully, for the price range.
$169,000 per the 169,000 dollars per home?
Per home.
So that you have to have qualifying applicants?
Well, actually, it's a new...
What they going to do?
It's a new...
I'm sorry.
It's a new program that's coming, and so, I guess, what's a poor communities where they have given 100% financing to qualify buyers.
About how long you think it'll leave before they get started on that, depending on our approval of it?
Well, actually, they have already have started some of the groundwork surveying, because some of the areas, like on Chestnut, they already own it. They already own those properties as well. Yeah, so February 1st, they are planning to start, and I know they've been working with a couple of relatives, Mike Ford, Dula Thomas, on trying to start to recognize, identify qualified buyers for these homes.
Mayor, that's off the, is that off the 25th side or the Walker side?
The, the house, if they get ready to start, it's right, it's the SL Henry side?
Okay.
And, yeah, right on the Chestnut, sure.
Mayor, just a quick question. Have we, since we demo, we've got a group or a team that, from the city now, that could go out and demo homes and buildings, have we come up with a cost yet, how much, we're going to charge per foot or per square?
Actually, that's something that Paul, this is coming up, when I have that number, the next meeting we're asking, we're going to be looking at for this, this area, is what it costs us a manpower, what it took for us to take in and get rid of the debris and different things like that. You know, I know it's a, we can't give away city services, and I do understand that, but I think this area right now is in dire need of some type of attention to, and I think having a situation, because if we don't do this, I don't see no other developer coming in building homes like that with that condition being as well.
No, I'll, I'll agree 100% that that area does need some attention.
Councilwoman Hutchinson, and then go to Councilwoman Mohammed.
Mayor, the people that are currently there, will they, well, I don't, you know, I guess with buying homes, they'll have to be pre-qualified, some of them. Are they, what are we, are we in conversation with them to let them know, you know, the timeframe that, what may be, or?
Well, let me, let me say this. We are not kicking anyone out. The homes that are occupied at this time, those are the individuals that stays in those trailers. Hopefully, we won't have individuals, I guess, hanging around and doing what may be done that doesn't live in that area. So, hopefully, the ones that live in there are still, those trailers will still be there. But we have started with offer, making offers to the people who live in the trailers about possibly selling. Ms. Mohammed?
I have another question. Thank you so very much, Mayor. Another question. Of course, it may be kind of difficult for some people to qualify. Are we going to put any programs out there, or Steve, Mr. Jones, that may help people get their credit scores up in order for them to qualify? And then, it would be great because becoming a homeowner, or owning your home, own home, of course, that's the American dream, is to become a homeowner. And I can see so much more pride being taken in the community if they know that, well, this is mine and I'll take better care of it, opposing that it belongs to somebody else. If I fix, break it, they'll have to fix it. So, are we going to, or are there already any programs that's launched to help people get their credit scores so they can qualify to buy?
Yes, ma'am. I'm glad you, you made that statement. Like I said, we've been working with relatives, Ms. Thomas and Mr. Ford, and through the, and through the Realtors Association, they are getting ready to put together some programs and plans on how to show people how to buy, what they need to start to clean up on their credit to be able to qualify for these homes. The HUD has a lot of programs available as well to help individuals, first time homeowners. I mean, you'd be surprised, was that the, I guess, single-parent home loans, many other different programs that they don't know about, and a lot of them just need to be educated on what's available for them to be able to take advantage of. And we're going to do everything that we can definitely to help these individuals, because I know, we was over there at the property, and I know one young man came through, and he just said, "You just don't know, this is, this is making our home community feel better, because now we see hope. We've been walking through this place, and it looks the way it's looking." And, you know, you imagine, we look at that, we want to fix it and make it better for the city, but can you imagine the people that actually live on there that want better, but they didn't have no other way to fix the person property beside them, you know? So, I just think it'd be a good thing all the way around, and definitely we want to help. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, to add to Ms. Mohammed, I did talk to some of the builders that was out there, and he said, I was asking about those different programs, and he said they was going to make sure they were set in place for the peoples, and the one that approved would have to take a class to learn how to take care of their home. They'd never been home on support.
So, I'm thinking that once we really get the project up and going the way we want it to go, we will be having meetings, community meetings, to help educate people.
Well, I'm going to say yes, because I think that's something we definitely need to do to make sure that the people are educated, but on these, some of these properties, they owned by, like the Durbins own, what, 90? They own several lots over there anyway, so they'll be building, but, yeah, it's going to be great for us and great for the builders to make sure that they got people that are ready to buy these homes what they are built.
I just wanted to, we just have had a flux of young individuals that have become entrepreneurs, and we've actually met, we've entered and sold licenses to three young ladies, and that's all they do is teach financial responsibility, teach people how to repair their credits, which is essential when you're on the loan. So, it might be good to get them involved with the guy, because they were very, very lucky. Why did that miss that much building, why did I tell the agents?
Councilman Monday?
Yeah, the housing authority have had this program for years and years that they teach people how to take care of their homes and how to get their credit up so they can, you know, now Sheila Handy has been over that program for a lot of years at the housing authority, and I know this for a fact, because she, that's what she went in doing. And it's a good program, and it showed people how to take care of their rental property when they was renting and everything. It's a good program. I, I know that we can get them to kind of partner with us on that, because y'all already got your setup. Thank you.
And I'm just throwing another idea that I definitely want to bring back to this body, and I'm not asking you all, many of the citizens, I'm just throwing up the idea. I would really love for you all to consider, you remember we used to have a officer next door program? And now that program is, is not in effect at this time. But I would show the love, I guess, when we talk about incentives, if we could, I guess, pay the closing costs up to $5,000. But I would show the love, I guess, when we talk about incentives, if we could, I guess, pay the closing costs up to five thousand dollars for a police officer, or a farmer, or dispatcher, or paramedic that wanna move back to the city of West Memphis. Something definitely I want you all to consider. Ms. Clark?
The next door program is still in existence, it's just that you have to find a house that you know that they want. But it is, they give, like, it's whatever the house is, they buy the house for half what it is. They have to stay there in the community X number of years, but it's still in effect, it's not gonna wait, you know?
That's good. And we'll try to be a part of it more, that I get with Kenneth as well, too, to see what's available. They didn't wanna have any other discussion about that, but I asked, I need a motion in second.
There are four amendments?
Yeah, there were.
Okay.
I wanna get a motion in second to make four amendments. I want to change three thirty-five Lincoln Street to Shady Grove Street. Six nineteen, South Nineteenth to six sixteen, South Nineteenth Street. I'm asking you all to remove twenty-seven oh-six Grove, because we own that property. But I'm asking you to add twenty-eight thirteen Oak, which is in the package that we just left off accidentally. It's twenty-eight thirteen Oak. I get a motion in second to approve that amendment?
Second.
All favor by? Opposed? That amendment passes? No.
Mayor, can we get, can we get someone to send us those amendments to this?
Sure, sure.
So, I could keep up.
You want me to add, you want me to start over? Okay, on the Shady Grove part, we just changed three thirty-five Lincoln to Shady Grove Street.
Okay.
And six sixteen, from six nineteen to six sixteen.
I will, I'll get with the.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hutchinson.
All right, all right. Do I get a motion in second to approve the resolution, I mean?
Submoved, second.
Okay. Okay, okay. So, Councilman Ked just made the motion, and Councilman Coon, they're approving. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution passed. Mr. Clark, will you give R three a resolution number?
Two-two-six-six, twenty-two-six-six.
Twenty-two-six-six. Mission. We're gonna start with committee reports, police department. We need to make, after this, we'll have the, because chairman is in, we're gonna make the budget.
Mr. Murray is the chairman, and, of course, he's out today, he'll give it at the next meeting.
Public Works? I know you see this right. I'm sure there was no other meetings. All right. I'm gonna ask for a motion in second to go into executive session for a quick five minutes.
Submove, second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? While we went into executive session. So, I'm gonna move forward, there were no more committee reports, no more appointments, no more presentations. You all know that next week, well, not next week, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be at the municipal league on the nineteenth, and it's gonna coincide with our next council meeting. So, we need to try to schedule a date to reschedule council meeting, I guess, to next Thursday? You know, what suggestions you all may have?
Hardly saying that the eleventh?
We're normally scheduled for the twentieth. When are you leaving?
Nineteenth, this Wednesday.
She'll meet, either Tuesday or Wednesday, the eighteenth or nineteenth?
Whatever day that's good.
Whatever day, I mean, you know, I'm talking about four, you're about to leave, so I mean, that.
I mean, they're leaving, what, first thing in the morning?
I gotta be there twelve, yeah.
What, what, what day they start, the municipal league start? It's January seventh?
The nineteenth.
It starts the nineteenth?
That evening, but I gotta be there.
I like to meet five o'clock on the eighteenth.
It's that, that's, okay, that's that Tuesday, right?
Yes, sir. Eighteenth is on Tuesday.
Eighteen? Eighteen.
Everyone five, five o'clock, Tuesday to the eighteenth? Councilman Willis?
Can we do it at twelve?
You good?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Harris? Doctor Brew?
You said what day is that on now?
It's a Tuesday.
What, what Tuesday?
The eighteenth, it's the, the third Tuesday.
I was just wondering about Parks, because on the eleventh.
So, may I make a motion?
Councilwoman Harris? I mean, I'm sorry, Hutchinson?
I'm fine, I don't know if we, are we on the same page with the time, everybody saying?
I always wanna come and meet earlier.
Um, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure you all can, but I just know normally you did the first one at one and the last one at five, so. But whatever you all decide.
This is a special event.
That's fine, I mean.
Can we meet earlier? Y'all like to meet earlier.
I like to keep it at five.
You wanna keep it at five? That's fine.
All right, well, if that's a good day, can I get a motion in second to change the meeting just for this meeting?
I make a motion to change it.
To the eighteenth Tuesday, eighteen to five?
Second, five o'clock.
Second.
Second, so? Any discussion that's today, everyone good?
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for the eighteenth at five P.M., January eighteenth to five P.M.
And while we're in that discussion, if there's anybody that decides they're not going to reserve a room for Kenneth, we'd like to ask you one more time, is there anybody that's on there to go that is not going to physically attend the conference, that we can cancel this room?
We know you're at this.
Yeah, I think he knows about you, and you're gonna be already happy on Zoom. Anybody else that can reserve rooms for every council member? If you're planning to attend a conference by Zoom, you need to know we can cancel the room.
You can go there, you won't have to pay for it.
You're gonna go, you're gonna be there in time?
You do have me on Zoom, don't you?
We are, well, he, he still booked a room just in case.
Oh, no, no, remember, we spoke and said, because of my daughter, I won't be able to attend.
Okay, so, yes, ma'am, we'll make sure. Anybody, are you able to log into your laptop and so that?
I usually do my own laptop, I can't log into the city.
Oh, okay, you give me your personal?
That's how they always log me, uh-huh.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, then we have rooms for everybody, I'll be lucky, we got in there early.
I know we're gonna win a lot of awards, this municipal league, so, actually, we working on a third one right now, so, great job.
All into Maryup, except for those that express the double treatment, just Monday and September.
Mr. Merrick?
But you guys work the Maryup, everybody else. Okay, thank you for your time.
We had a citizen request, Mr. Roger Brown, but I'm sure we don't, he's not here due to the fact of the weather, so we may have to automatically place him on the next one. One thing I can say, I want everyone to be safe, make sure you cover yourself, you know, COVID going on with this weather out here, make sure you drive safely. Have a great year. Anyone need to add anything before we go?
Just one thing, wanted to follow up, our last meeting on procedures. Soon as I get back with city attorney, we'll start drafting an ordinance, get it out to everybody, let you review it, amend it, and then, you know, hopefully get it on the agenda relatively soon, you know, two or four weeks from now.
Uh, anyone else?
We need, the budget committee needs to meet after this meeting, and it's set up a chairman and a time we're gonna meet.
That's the same thing I was getting ready to say, oh, no, this is dangerous, my mind is working like yours.
Mr. Coon? Ms. Coon, you been adding?
Thank you, Laurie.
I thought you been adding something?
No, no, no.
For the budget committee, that's not good.
Ms. Clark?
Have update on budget on there.
Anything else? Anyone need to add anything?
Well, the only thing I was gonna say was the, the only thing that I know about the budget committee right now is that we are meeting on the last Wednesday of the month.
We can have to meet now.
No, I'm talking about the meeting, is where Tori said she wanna stay with that schedule you had.
It was always the fourth Thursday of the month, was when we always met, the fourth Thursday.
Okay, whatever it was, that's what she wants to stay with.
What time did you make?
Well, hearing nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn, the motion is second.
Second.
Okay. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.